All right, good evening. Welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, February 28th. First on the agenda, we're gonna do a little moving around because the girls are in the first playoff game tonight?
Second playoff.
Second playoff game tonight, and we want to get Mr. DeFranco over to the game to cheer them on.
Oh, yes.
So I'm gonna do the consent, you can come on up, Chris, I'm gonna do the consent agenda, and then we're gonna get right into his section. So first up is the approval of minutes from the regular session of February 14th, 2013, and the acceptance of warrants 35 V-13 and 34 P-13. I want to obtain a motion as to approve this.
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, Chris, so, I guess, how do you?
So what you want to do?
Open up, take a right tab.
Tab K is your tab on athletics. And so, just as a quick introduction, and I do thank Chris for being here, Peter is actually at the game already because the high school principal should be represented, as should the athletic director, who will get there eventually, to the game. So I appreciate Chris taking the time to be here tonight. So one of the things that we do as part of the budget is we look at not only our school programs, but we look at our departments, our various, and tonight, basically, we're gonna go over those areas of the budget. So in Tab K, what we do to build the budget is, the first thing we do is we ask Chris to put together what he believes the budget will cost to deliver the sports program for the FY, in this case, the FY-13 athletic budget. And just as I explained last week, how we build the budget on our end for the schools and the district lines, is we start with a series of assumptions. Okay? We have some challenges with athletics. We've had some challenges for years with athletics, and we're not solving our challenges with athletics in this budget. I think we should just say that right from the beginning, that there was still, we have still some concern. They quickly go back, I can go back as far as I've been here, and the year I came, there was a failed override. And one of the decisions that was made at that time was that sports was basically going to be 100% funded by the athletes. There was no money in the budget at that point, in the budget that I inherited the year that I came. One of the nice things is when you have a new, fresh set of eyes, usually people are willing to let you take a look at it, and that's what I did, working with my administrative team. Fifty percent of them, by the way, were brand-new to the district, as was I. And we really took a look, and we, one of the things we did in this budget that we were able to bring forward is we did add some relief to the athletes by putting $33,000 in school choice. Always assuming it wasn't gonna stay there forever, but at least it allowed us to be able to keep athletic fees, which were really high. I mean, those fees at the time were 370 and 450. Which, and when we looked at ourselves across the state, we were among the highest fees in the state. Which didn't make any of us happy, especially since we believe in athletics, that it's a core part of our program, and it is not an extra.
Yeah, as Niask pointed out, it's co-curricular.
And it's co-curricular, and that was one of the things that Niask is certainly, has certainly looked at. So you know, when we had the override, we decided that one of the priorities would be to put $68,000 in the budget, in addition to the 33 in choice, lower the user fees, and see where we were able to go. It helped, the families gave a little relief, but it didn't allow us to run the sports program in the way that we needed to have it run in a surplus. And we're not, it's not a money-making thing, but we want to be able, we don't want to be, just like we don't want to have our budgets at home be down to the penny. I mean, we have ended our budget in the last three years, about $14,000 to $16,000 in deficit, which we have had to dip in to our school choice revolving account to cover, just to get, just to get through the...
Just for break even.
Just for break even.
That's not buying new uniforms, it's not doing anything.
No, one of the things, one of the things we do rely heavily on is fundraising done by coaches and their teams. That is a lot of how we've gotten new equipment and, you know, new uniforms. So if you look at the beginning page on, Tab K, you'll see the assumptions that this budget is based on. It does include the current $68,000 in the budget again next year. It does include the current school choice budget of $33,000. So if we decide that we're not going, or we're gonna diminish the school choice amount we're willing to put in, or we're gonna eliminate altogether, we know that we need $33,000 more to get this, to make this budget work. It does maintain a family cap of $1,500. And we do have statistics, we did collect that information as to how many families benefit from that.
Yeah, so one of the things that hadn't been in previous budgets was actual paid athletes. So they were just calculating all of the athletes there, kind of assuming that they were all paying, but we found about 7%, whether because of family cap or free and reduced lunch, don't actually pay the user fee. So we calculated that into the budget this year, so that's something.
So that's part of why we ended up with $14,000 deficits, because if we only had, you know, 400 athletes paying, but we were thinking we had 430, that's, we started out at a deficit with that. So that's important. And that's the next bullet. We did make sure that anyone who comes forward and says, you know, "I do receive a free and reduced lunch," then the food service director, to maintain confidentiality, since she's the only one who has access to that information, verifies, you know, the information, and then that moves forward. And then, you know, Triple E, you know, is probably not going away. We'd like to believe it will, but one of the things that Chris did do in this budget is he assumed that it wasn't gonna go away, and then did put some money in here to budget for that, and then...
We probably should spray the fields, and that would be to bust everyone over to...
And that was one of the things that I know the Board of Health, you know, did a few times. But then, once you spray the fields, you can't be on them for three days. So, you know, when you're in the heart of the season, you know, and you're playing games every other day, it's...
I said it, yeah.
Yeah, in jest, yes. And then, just so you know, the current user fees, and this committee actually already increased the user fees.
$25.
$25.
This year.
So this would, this is based on, the current user fees are 280 and 350. So then, you know, Chris did a wonderful job going through what the options might be for us. And then he presented, he and Peter Lucia came over, met with Joan and I, met with the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. We went back and forth a few times to come up with a variety of options that would allow us to work with our current program. So what you see on this, into this tab is that Option 1, the three-tiered user fee. Right now, we have a two-tiered user fee. But we do have some sports that are very expensive, more expensive. They have either shorter roster, more games, more bus rides, you know, for whatever reason. And then there are some sports that are much less expensive to run, cross-country being one. So Option 1 that we're recommending is a three-tiered user fee. And Chris breaks down for you what those sports, how those sports are divvied up in terms of which tier they would fall into. And then he tells you what the projected end-of-year balance would be. And then if you turn the page, these were all the other options that were reviewed. And you can see they, there was one option that was 300, 400, 500. And then you can see that all of, most of those, if not all of those, ended, continued to end in deficit. The only other option that we, that we looked at was if we go with the three-tiered, that's one thing, but if we need to feel that we need more of a balance, or you decide that school choice is not an option you want to continue to apply, then we would, we looked at what sports we would cut. And the sport, the sports that we would, the sport we'd recommend would be freshman basketball. That would still leave middle school, because we would run a middle school program then. That would leave middle school, junior varsity, and varsity. And there is an impact, we thought it was the impact of the fewest students, however. I think the impact, the good freshmen, the students that were really good freshmen, would probably still play JV, but the kids who maybe aren't as strong, that would normally make the team, because the freshmen would play freshmen, they wouldn't be able to play freshmen. So some of the upperclassmen may, you know, may suffer the consequences of that decision. But if you've had a chance to look through your packet, you have a chance, you've had a chance to kind of see what was being discussed. And then for each one of these things, Chris did a really, Chris and Joan together, I think, worked on the spreadsheets, but they did a spreadsheet for each one of the options, basically, right? So that you can, you can see it in, for those of you who like to look at big-picture spreadsheets as opposed to narrative lines and tables, this gives you the background on that. So, Chris, I'm not sure if there's any other, anything else you'd like to feature or recommendations, otherwise, I think we can entertain some questions from the school committee.
I think the most important thing to me, if possible, is to not cut sports. I think once you cut a sport, it's pretty much gone forever. So if the numbers don't dictate, if the kids coming out to play don't dictate that we need a team, this year, we didn't have a freshman girls' basketball team because there weren't enough kids. That's okay. But if we cut a team, and because of that, some kids don't get an opportunity to play, that kind of goes against the mission of the athletic department, which is to maximize playing opportunities.
Yeah, we did talk, at the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, we did talk about, you know, maybe looking at it in two phases. So if Phase 1, which is why the recommendation is to adjust the user fee to three tiers, is not to cut a sport. If, for whatever reason, that didn't work, then in another year, the committee may be in a position, because you're not gonna want to keep raising user fees every year. So you either have to make a commitment to more money in the budget, right? Or you have to increase user fees, or we have to reduce things. Or we have to decide, are we gonna offer the sports we have, and is there another sport we should be offering where we could have greater participation? Because those are all decisions that need to be made going forward.
And the thing that we have to be careful of, if we don't raise fees every year, and this is what got us into trouble before, our costs are going up every year. The cost of buses go, increases, the cost of the officials, the coaches, and those are really the big ones, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Equipment actually does go up too, basketballs and soccer balls.
All right, so, and everything is going up, so if we keep the fees flat, we're constantly shrinking that and creating a bigger deficit for ourselves.
Right, and one of the things we are talking about is the $68,000 that's in the budget. Looking at charging, like the athletic director stipend and a portion of the coaches' salaries, they wouldn't all fit, but a portion of the coaches' salaries, and then when, when they get raises each year, just like when we build our budget for our teachers, we, we know they're getting a raise, we know what their raise is, and we build it into the budget. It's just how we start the budget process. Well, if we put some of these salary lines in the budget, we know that we're just gonna, whatever the raise is, is gonna go in. That would make it, make the budget go up, that would be a budgetary contribution a little bit more each year, and would have less burden on the athletic revolving account. That's something we can do that would give a little bit more money into the budget.
But that'll require a cut somewhere else in our budget, if you're gonna start moving them off of choice under the...
Yeah, I mean, that's correct.
Well, something else will have to get reduced.
Well, or go for an increase at year-end. The school committee, you know? Yeah, our budget.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, right. But if you're gonna take, like, if you have $68,000 right now, that's supporting athletics, or I'm sorry, say 33 on choice, and you want to move that onto the budget, it means you need to find $33,000.
Right. Or what you have to do is what we've done in other situations with school choice. I'm thinking in particular when we went to full-day kindergarten. You know, in order to do full-day kindergarten for all, we temporarily put a couple of salaries into school choice. And then the following year, we moved one back, and then the following year, we moved another back. So, you know, you don't have to look at it as it's 33, and then it's not 33, you know?
You can do increments.
We even talked about that this year, should we say, all right, now we don't have 33, you have 23 this year. The following, so over a four-year period, you're, you know, you're, you're getting to a point where it's not such a dramatic drop-off. And certainly, Chris is gonna do some recruiting, because we have that bubble, we have that bubble class going through that's now in the seventh grade, right? So if they come into the eighth grade, then they may be, more kids may participate in the high school program, which, you know, could certainly help us. But our programs, unfortunately, we don't really qualify for a co-op at this point, because we have enough kids to make it almost work for us without having another team. Like, we lost the track opportunity at the high school because Ipswich ended up with enough kids. So, you know, there's so many issues, it's really not a cut-and-dried, and, like I said, Chris, I mean, for Chris to come in with all the options and really thought them through, I give him a lot of credit, because it's, the nuances are quite amazing.
So other questions for the, from the committee?
Well, just what strikes me, and again, you know, I don't have a child in middle or high school. I'm looking at this program, and I'm thinking, it seems incredibly small. It's such a small program, I mean, there's so few sports included. And I didn't go to a very big high school, but the options for the kids are pretty limited here. So that, that's, I wonder about the history, like, how did we get to these sports as opposed to other sports? Maybe that, that's not, I'm not, but you did mention something like, is this really what the majority of students are interested in participating in? I mean, it does seem like traditional, you know, football, basketball, those are very traditional sports. But, yeah, I'm sad about how small it is, and that it's such a struggle.
Well, you know, it's interesting, you know...
It sounds like such a struggle to just maintain what we...
You meet all of these folks in town, you know, over the years that you're in a place, and they'll talk to me about how, when they went to school in Georgetown, there was a hockey team, there was a track team. I mean, there were, all of these options were available to people in Georgetown years ago. So I think some of it has been that the costs have definitely increased. And then kids have other things that they do too, you know, I mean, you know, when I, of course, my father was an athletic director and a health teacher, so I was playing three sports, there was no question, and there were my brothers and sisters. But at the same time, you know, that was a great thing, but most of the people that I knew played sports as part of, you know? But, you know, I know places where there's no athletic fees at all, and kids still don't necessarily play sports. Times have changed a little bit, too. But I think it's a cost factor, too. But that's one of the things we've talked about, I think Rob was, had brought that up at our Budget and Finance Subcommittee meeting, is, you know, going forward, looking at where we want to be, you know? We need to probably do a little work getting information from our student body, really looking at some of the history. You know, are these the sports that are gonna...
Would we have larger participation if other sports were offered?
Golf's a good example of how it can work potentially. We had a golf co-op with Penn Tockett, that was ended, basically the same reason that the track and field was ended, that they grew to the point where they couldn't get accepted by the MIA as a co-op team with us anymore. Essentially, once you start making cuts, that's when you get to that point. And we had a group of parents and kids who wanted to have a Georgetown golf team, and we said, "Let's try it as a club this year." And it has to be user-funded, so they, we figured out how much it would cost to pay a coach and all those sorts of things, and they paid in, and they got a little more than 20 kids to do it, which is great. So this year, I proposed putting in a golf team, so bringing that back as a user-funded sport, and then if it survives, then we'll look at adding it into the budget in three years.
So, so, my sense is that you have one or two very aware parents in the community, and they, they see, "Oh, my kid's interested in golf, I'm gonna come and talk to..." But I, we were just saying, you know, how many parents really understand that they could take that step? You know, if you had a child who was interested in a particular sport, would you just look at the school and go, "Oh, we're out of luck, we don't get that sport"? Or would they know who, what, you know, that they could actually contact somebody, somehow take some action?
I do have parents come to me a lot and ask about, you know, "Could we have a swim team? Could we have a ski team? Could we have a volleyball team?", all those sorts of things. And what I always say is, "I need to see that there's numbers of people that are interested." And more often than not, there aren't.
They can't get the numbers.
Right, and the golf is an exception to that, and it's a good thing.
Yeah, that is a good thing. It's interesting, it's good to know, yeah.
I mean, some districts, Hamilton, Wenham, Hamilton, yeah.
Isn't that 100%?
They've gone, they've gone to a system where, you know, let's say, one year this happened with their girl softball program. They said, "Okay, this is what it costs, and you have that, that information in your packet, what every one of our sports costs, and the only sport that pays for itself is middle school track." And we don't even have a track, but middle school track pays for itself. That's the only sport, every other sport runs in a deficit.
And that's like 45 students.
Right.
Right.
What about cheering?
Cheering runs in a deficit.
But interestingly, so you have 45 students on middle school track. When you get to the high school level, I think last year, we had seven students.
Do we even have that many, Chris, that went to the co-op? I thought it was more like three.
It depended on the season, so in the winter, we had three, in the spring, we had ten.
Okay.
There you go, there's seven.
Part of that is a cultural thing, too, where you have perhaps the group where there's three, four, seven, whatever, that age group, and then now there's this new, this other group, and this, their age group, and their culture, and you have this, all this interest in that.
Yeah.
And so it is cyclical that way.
Yeah.
One of the things that's really, I don't know how you get a handle on it, but in terms of what sports and those kinds of questions, you know, excellence breeds excellence, and excellence breeds excitement. And how you, how you can find out what sports that we may or may not be offering right now, that if you focused on those and not others, you breed this kind of excellence, that people that never thought they wanted to do it now start to want to do it as time goes by, and towns have done that. There have been a number of towns that become these little mini powerhouses known for this sport and that sport, and that's just another part of it.
Well, I think the other thing that feeds into it, too, is your feeder systems, right? So, you know, GAA offers certain kinds of sports, and that gives kids the, so, you know, you get to go to middle and high school, you know, you might want to continue with those sports. So there's a lot of factors, so one of the things...
Lacrosse is a good example of that.
Lacrosse is a very good example of that.
That wasn't really anything, a few, I can't remember how many years ago it started.
Yes, and then Heather...
Yeah, it didn't, yeah.
It started, it started the year before I came, so I think it's like seven years.
Was it about five, yeah?
Something like that.
Yeah. That would make sense.
And that, you know, there was, there was a couple of parents who were very, very into lacrosse, and they did exactly what Chris was saying, they started with a club program, and then it made its way, you know, into the budget. But there's a lot of factors, you know, the coach, and how well kids like the coach, the, you know, you know, whether the facility is such that, you know, it's, it's good, you know, there's the chemistry of the teams. I mean, there's a lot of factors, but one of the things that, if we're gonna look at this issue of sustainability, we're gonna have to start teasing out some of those variables. But for the FY-14 budget, in the short term, we're trying to figure out, of these options, which option, none of them are great options, by the way. But which of them is gonna get us through the year and is not gonna result in us, you know, running all year in a deficit? Of course, when you raise user fees, you're not sure whether the raising of user fees is gonna jeopardize the participation. It hasn't seemed to, and, again, short-term data collection would indicate that we have no more athletes playing now, or no fewer athletes playing now than we did when our fees were 450 and 370, for some reason.
Our, our number of participants went down this year, two years ago, excuse me, when we lowered the athletic fees.
So fees are a factor, you know, when I talk individually with people, but it's not necessarily the factor.
Right.
And remember the basketball discussion, you heard people saying, "Well, just tell us what it's gonna cost, and we'll, we'll increase the fee, because we want our students to have this opportunity to play." So those are the dilemmas that we face. So Chris's recommendation, and I think the Budget and Finance Committee's recommendation, Joan and I, we came to the conclusion that of all these options, the Option 1, doing the three-tiered user fees, 375, 425, and 475, was the recommendation. And thinking about that, we were, we were trying to respond to the fact that some schools or some sports, we always get people asking the question, "Well, my child, all you're buying my child is a t-shirt to run in cross-country, how do you charge 370?", right? And then you're also charging 370 for, you know, another sport that's more costly to run. So we've never had a good answer to that, because we always say we have to split the shared costs. That's how we, you know, because we have a choice. We could do what Hamilton is doing and saying, "This is what it costs, and if you don't get this many kids by this date, there will be no program this year in that." And that's what they did with their softball program one year, they didn't run girl softball because they didn't get enough athletes. That's one way to go. The other way to go is to look at this, we have certain shared costs that get divvied up across the board, and we just know we run a deficit in every sport. But it's 94% user fee-funded, and that's the reality. So we were recommending that, not cutting any sports for this particular year, and as Chris said, seeing whether or not some of the sports weed themselves out, you know, if we don't have enough students, for whatever reason, that are interested or able to play.
Does that, if I'm reading this right, that leaves us 871?
$871, yes.
So if we, if we start to hit lower roster sizes on any of these sports...
I think we've accounted for that a little bit better than we have in the past.
Okay. Because we're doing the paying customers.
Eight athletes, we've accounted for Triple E, which was a big thing.
Okay.
Tournament buses, which was something that, once you get into the state tournament, you know, the bus rides get longer and longer. Remember going to Worcester last year, and that was a long, pretty expensive bus ride?
Yeah. It's great that the girls have made it this far, but let's be clear, we're paying for more buses now.
So I think the budget is more real, I guess that's, you know, I think that's...
Absolutely.
Yes, it sounds very well centered.
Yeah. All right, any question, any more questions for Chris, we can get him off to cheer the girls on?
I'll be tweeting the...
Yes, please, I'll text.
We don't have to.
I'm not into doing, I don't tweet, I text.
My, my only concern with this is, with, I mean, really, it's break even.
Yeah.
Is that once the paid athlete numbers start to fall, what we're gonna, how we're gonna mitigate that? Especially, like, I get nervous with football, only at 18 and 14 for varsity and JV are freshmen. 14 is, I don't know, like, how you make it...
Those kids actually, a lot of them play both, so they'll play in the freshman game, and then they'll be on the varsity roster as well.
Okay.
Oh, good.
So, there is crossover there.
All right. I mean, that's my only concern, is the roster sizing, and there's no wiggle room. So that's a risk you're willing to take, that's...
I think it's calculated risk.
I think it's a calculated risk.
All right.
And honestly, if it, if it doesn't work, then we do need to go back to the drawing board and say, "All right, here we go, either more goes in the budget, or we offer different sports, or if we can't afford football, you know, or we try to figure out a way to share the costs in some way with another, another school that might be interested."
Or we ask the families, I mean, like, the basketball, like you said, the basketball families showed up and said, "Tell us how much it is, and we'll pay it."
Well, but remember, that was a fraction of all the people that play basketball. That's the thing that concerns...
They can't necessarily speak for everyone, yeah.
Right, that's what concerns me is, and it was great that people came out, but I'm sure there were a lot, there were other families as well, where the $300 fee is, is enough for them to muster for a sport for a child.
Right.
That's what...
And it's still, it's good to hear from the public and what their concerns are, and we absolutely want to...
I think it's great, but... But we have to be clear that it wasn't, I'm gonna guess it was about a third of the basketball, paying basketball people.
I'm not sure it was that much.
Maybe less, maybe smaller.
And as Barbie said, I mean, you know, every year, you know, you're talking about the budget in totality, in its totality, so, you know, maybe there, you know, maybe, you know, there'll be other movement in the budget that would allow you to put, you know, more money in the budget. So those are all things that, you know, are out there that could possibly happen.
We just have to start recruiting more.
That's right. More athletes. My money's on Chris, I think he can do it.
All right, so we're gonna keep going on revolving?
Right. Well, I think...
Or on, on the other, so I'm just trying to think of getting Chris out of here.
Yeah, I guess we don't need to take any kind of a vote, although, do you need to, do you need to vote on those user fees? Because I'm thinking that...
It's gonna go into the Athletic Handbook.
Which is, which is in May, right?
Which we vote on, yeah.
So you're gonna vote, you're gonna vote on the whole budget on March 7th anyway, so...
We adopt next week.
Yeah, so I think it's okay, Chris, we'll just, I mean, are you, are you, are you, right, are you in, are you in concept in support of Chris's recommendation?
I support it, I don't like it.
I don't like it either.
No offense to you, I, I mean, it's...
None of us like it.
Yeah, I just, the idea that we're at almost 500... Yeah, I just, the idea that we're at almost five hundred dollars for a sport is, it's just, it's a big number.
It's a huge number.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like to see user fees going up, I mean, it shouldn't be that way, this is public school, public education, but. We also can't be running at a deficit. We have to balance the budget.
Okay, Chris, I think you're set, go Royals.
Good luck, good luck.
They do good.
Text Carol or something, so I know.
Definitely. Thanks again, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Um, alright, so. Let's just think about where you wanna go next, well, why don't we just follow on here, let's go to eleven, I mean, to L. Um, this is the buildings and grounds and you can remember that, uh, Joan, um, consolidated. The buildings and grounds budgets from the schools into the overall district, um, maintenance, which is why you see the increases. It's just, it's just reflecting, uh, budgeting in a different spot. Joan, is there anything that you would wanna point out in this budget?
Yep, um, in the, in the, uh, second part, the, uh, maintenance salaries district, you'll notice an increase there. We reorganized mid-year, I think it was around mid-year, no, couldn't be mid-year, we're mid-year now, mid-year since I've come, so maybe around October. Um, Mike was really, uh, spending a lot of money on contracted services, trying to keep up with the maintenance issues, so. Um, we sat down, the three of us, and we talked about a way to do, um, business better, more efficiently, whatever, so. We added a maintenance person, we reorganized, we had a half a maintenance person at the high school and half custodial position. And just really couldn't get a, you know, there was too many custodial responsibilities, so we reorganized that position and took. A piece of money away from that position and then we took some monies that our school custodians are, um, budget, were budgeted. And we talked about this when we were at the building level, um, that were budgeted, uh, the district budget, and we put back to some of the revolving accounts in order to free up monies. To add this position, so you'll see that increase there. Um, the, the forty-five point nine percent increase is a position plus, you know, raises that they would get, but. Um, it's really helped us because our, if you look at the two lines down, that's all we have for contracted services is a hundred and six thousand dollars budgeted. So, that's not a lot of money when things go and, and you need to call in plumbers and electricians and what have you, so. Um, we feel like, you know, we can't really measure yet because we haven't had a, a person on for the full year, but. Already, they've taken care of a lot of projects, they did a lot of the cable, uh, wiring when we did the security cameras. And I mean, things that would've cost us a lot of money to put out, if we could even get people to come and do it, because. You know, when we were trying to purchase all that security stuff, people were right out straight, security companies, so, I mean, they really saved us there, we know that, so. I just wanna point that out, and then basically, we just took the, the rest of the monies that were budgeted at the schools and put it in that bottom line. And then up at the, um, the telephones, uh, right up above there, telephones district wise, you see a fifty-four percent decrease. That's because, um, we implemented, uh, we're, we're implementing right now the E-rate program, which is a reimbursement, a federal reimbursement program. Um, designed originally for libraries, but includes schools and libraries, and it's to, um, increase. Um, students' access to internet and that's the funding, it's, I don't, it's been around for decades. Um, we hadn't really taken advantage of that, it's quite cumbersome. Um, I actually hired a consultant to do the paperwork because it just takes so long to do the paperwork. And if you make one little mistake, you lose your funding for that year, and everything has to be done a year in advance for the following year, so, um.
The savings save, pay for the consultant.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, we're probably gonna save, you know, over twenty thousand dollars, a consultant costs three thousand. And so we did it in a way that, um, we'll get, we'll get, uh, credits, we, instead of taking cash, we took the credit on our bills. So we'll get credits for our internet service, our tele, our regular telephones, our cell phones. Um, there was one other thing, so, I mean, it's really something that is important. And probably in a small district, people probably didn't look at it, that, because it's, it's very cumbersome. But what's fascinating and what is really important here is that if you do it properly and you plan appropriately. It can give you reimbursement on the building project, because it, it will, if, as long as we have our technology plan in place. And we have the specs written appropriately and file the right forms, they will give you reimbursement on your building project, so. There's another big thing, so, so, but.
The people who need to know that, know that.
Well, we need to know, we ha, you have to be filed for the school. Right, it has to be filed for this, by the school districts, they're the only, and libraries can file too, so, yeah, we'll be on top of it. And so I'm very happy to have hired the consultant to take care of it.
That's great.
But I, other than that, I think, nothing remarkable.
Okay, okay, then let's move on to tab M in special education. So Donna, maybe you wanna come, Donna, come on up to the table if you don't mind? Um, okay, so, um, a much of the special education discussion we had, uh, at the last, um. Uh, when we discussed the overall, uh, breakdown of the budget, particularly special education. Um, and, uh, first I, I wanna, uh, recognize both, uh, Donna and Joan. Uh, for the real hard work they're doing, trying to really keep control over the special education budget, it is, it is not easy. It's got many moving parts and, um, many things are mandated, uh, you know, at the team level. Um, sometimes outside recommendations drive some of those things, and, um, you know, it, the services are required by law. So, um, the, you know, you don't get to say, well, okay, we'll give you the service, but we're not paying for it, so it's, you know, the. Those things kinda go together and sometimes we'll disagree and we'll have to use legal counsel to try to work out a resolution to it. And that's, you know, costly in and of itself, but I think the other thing that I, that I wanna just emphasize, uh, for a minute is. That because of the expertise of these two ladies, one of the things that we have been able to do for the town is to. Um, bring in reimbursement for Medicaid. Um, that's something that, um, and, and I'll be the first to say, I, I had no idea how it worked, these, I've been educated and I'm thrilled to death to know what I know now. Um, but we were able, as a result of, of using, um, putting certain, um, allocations and expenses. You know, not in grants or in grants, we were able to, um, impact the reimbursement for the children eligible for Medicaid. By just doing the paperwork, more than anything else, we were always doing the services, but we, we needed to do the paperwork differently. So, we actually, um, provided to Mike Farrell fifty, uh, fifty-three thousand dollars in reimbursements. Just through December, this year.
Is that net, did we have to hire someone?
It's peanuts.
Yeah, but, okay, so.
Couple thousand. We pay, we pay, so it's not net, we pay them and the, and the, the town gets the money.
The town gets a check and it stays with the town.
Right.
That's the way the law is written.
Right.
That's the way it happened.
And the expectation is that there'll be another fifty-three thousand dollars for the second half of the year. So that would mean, just by the decisions made by these two ladies, in terms of how we account for things and what sources.
But this is also something that, like, only we can do, only the school.
We can only do the paperwork, because we're the ones delivering the services.
And so it's, it's fifty-three thousand dollars that we're reimbursed based on services that we actually delivered.
Correct.
To the students, that, but the money goes back to the town.
But a hundred thousand dollars that the town was not expecting is, is actually coming back to the town. I think the other thing I wanna emphasize, cause I, I was talking to some folks from town and questioned about, you know, why does your budget go up four point six percent? How did that happen?
You just had an override.
And, exactly, so, one of the things that, you know, I explained is that. When we look at us as a town department, in the same apples-to-apples argument as other departments. We have salaries and we have non-salaries, that's really how most people's budgets work. Our salary lines go up two point five percent, which is consistent with other town departments, it is also consistent. And remember, we have step and scale, not just, not just a percentage on top, okay? So we were able through.
Step and scale is not unique to Georgetown.
No, 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 it's the way education is funded, but it is more than finding two percent, okay? So, one of the things that I wanna emphasize is that we were conscious about. And we did make some reductions in order to make sure that we stayed within that two and a half percent. That we were asked to, to work with. In addition to that, all the non-salary lines are below level funding, they're less than we spent last year. So, if we did not have some of the expenses related to special education. That are tuition and transportation for out-of-district, um, to our other, our others in district students are accounted for in our budget.
They're accounted for in the two and a half percent that you're talking about, with the salary increase, and then the less, then the minimal increase or actually flat. That we have in other expenses.
And we do use grants, so that's another way we, you know, we do get a ninety-four, which we're gonna talk about. We do get a special education grant and we do use that grant to offset, you know, special education expenses as well. So, the, this wild card of, of, you know, tuition and transportation for out-of-district. Is what accounts for the difference above what everybody else in town is coming in at in terms of the way their budgets work. The other thing we have to remember is, we don't now have next year two hundred thousand dollars more in special ed costs. It's the same two hundred thousand dollars that we got help from the town this year.
Right.
But we said all along, the problem is, as grateful as we are, when money comes from free cash and it's a one-year deal. On a recur, to fund recurring expenses, this is predictable, this is what happened with the stimulus, right? The stimulus money came in and then when the stimulus money left, we still had the expenses, that's how it works. So I don't want the public to think that, oh my god, you know, this budget's going up two hundred thousand dollars in special education, new special ed expenses. They're not new, they're pretty much the same ones we have, which we are controlling by working with families. Within our district and for those that are out of district, trying to make sure that only the ones that really need to go out of district are going out of district. So we're being very creative at our, in with our in-house programs, again, Donna's brought a lot of expertise in that way. So that's just, we can't fund it if we don't have that two fifty or two hundred that we got from the town. It's, it's, it's not gonna, that's the deficit, so I just want people to understand that.
And the, the only, the only, uh, difference between the, um, uh, the, the money coming from free cash. Um, and the stimulus money in that analogy, the only difference, and, is that the money coming from free cash. Was going to the special ed and the special ed, uh, additional cost, which was something that we have to do. And the stimul, and the stimulus money, in some cases, we would, other towns or whatever would choose how to use the money, not necessarily what, that they had to put it into an account.
Correct.
And that's a big difference.
It is a big difference, but the, like, the similarity that I'm, the, 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 the connection I'm trying to draw here is. That it's money that is coming in to, short-term money, coming in to fund recurring expenses. If that money is not there anymore, and you're right, Rob, we made all kinds of decisions as to how we spent the money. But the point is that once the one point two million dollars was not there anymore, those expenses, regardless of what we paid for. Was still, were there, and that's, that's the funding cliff that they were all talking about us trying to avoid. So, in terms of special education, right now, what's reflected, again, the other thing that Joan and, uh, Donna. Uh, advocated for in this budget and we did do it, is to centralize all of the special education costs into a district. A, a district pool, so to speak, um, as opposed to representing them all in the individual schools.
This is really the same thing that we went through a couple weeks ago.
It is, it is, it, yeah, it is.
I like the presentation in that you can see the big thing that people tend to forget and I. We've explained it and I understand why people forget, because there's a lot to think about, is that when we have an out-of-district placement. We're responsible for transporting that student back and forth with whatever extra, um, requirements that they may or may not have. At, at a hundred percent, we don't receive any reimbursement for that, and secondly, we're responsible for their annual tuition. For the first almost forty thousand of their annual tuition and then anything above that, we're reimbursed at a seventy-two percent rate. But tuition, uh, transportation is all ours, no matter what.
Right, but, you know.
Two separate bills.
Two separate bills, so, you know, one of the things I think that stand, stands out and has stood out for some people who've asked questions about this is. That the total cost for special education tuition and transportation for next year is one point four million dollars. But the reimbursement that we will receive in circuit breaker is three hundred thousand. Hopefully.
Yeah, that's, that's at a seventy-two percent rate, which.
Right.
Yeah, it, the year that we, um, I think. It was the first year I was on the committee, first or second year, we were at seventy-two percent or so, and then we went right down to thirty-eight. And when they reduce, and we can't reduce our, um, services by that, about, we're on the hook for that.
And I think the hard part about, anytime you have conversations about special education or regular education is, you know, we never want to have it come across. That we're pitting one against the other, we, we are about all kids, we have sixteen hundred plus kids. That have a variety of needs, um, and they all come in with their own strengths and weaknesses and challenges and we meet them where they are. We are responsible for educating everyone, and there are students that do need and require more than other students. And those experiences cost more in many cases, we, we understand that and, and we bring it, we put it together as a. As a budget, just as a way to explain how the numbers work, but we don't ever want anybody to think that we're complaining about it. That's not the, you know, it's not, special ed has so much money and so regular ed can't, that, that isn't the way we wanna think about it, it's not the way we should think about it. Um, you know, we need to have enough money for, to educate every student to the level that we need to have it. But special ed tuition and transportation out, one of the things that we're really focusing on, and that's why we've spent time and energy and money in the last. Three to four years, building our own in-house programs, having a continuum across the board for kids with particular types of prototypes. Is because we believe that the, that our goal is to have those children be able to be educated in their home community with their peers. And if there are situations where they can't, because they, their needs are just too great, we understand that we need to find another alternative. And work with the families on that, but it's a process of give and take and, um, you know, we, we want those. Those kids here, if, if it, if it's at all possible. So, we're focused on that, when you think one point four million dollars is a lot of money, it is a lot of money, um.
But it's really worth the investment.
It's worth the investment in those students if those programs are ones that those students need and require.
Highest quality special education programs and services in our own district, and it's, it's best for all the students and it's.
Yes, it is.
For all teachers, general ed and special education teachers to, to have that, you know, that training and development and understanding of how to help the kids.
Right, absolutely, absolutely. Donna, is there anything in the budget that you want to point out or, um, you know, do you just wanna take questions from the committee?
I think, um, the only comment I would make is there's a couple of new items in there, um, psychologist consumables and assessments and. In reviewing, um, again, some of past practices for the budget, I thought it was important in working with Joan that. We pull out some of these more specific pieces so that everybody can see exactly where their money's going, why it's going there and why the needs are, so. Um, so, you know, as we continue down that road, you may see that again come next year as, you know, we continue teasing out the pieces. But, uh, otherwise, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
One of the additions that I should point on is that we're, we're really working on is, as, as, um, our programs have continued to develop. We have some needs for, um, a ther, more of a therapeutic environment, particularly with some of our middle, middle and high school programs. Um, and this year, we were able through choice to add, um, a half-time therapist. Which has been very, very, very valuable, our therapist is very talented and, you know, it's just been a service we really need. And we really need that to be a full-time therapist next year.
And that goes into special ed?
So, yeah, we, we funded in special ed, so that's, that's certainly, um.
In the department salaries.
Something that we, we definitely need to, to do.
So what we would be doing is bolstering our cognitive behavior therapy type program. Where, we're providing not only educational academic services, but meeting the needs of the social emotional services. So we have somebody there on the spot and in the moment for these students.
The, the new Penbrook project and, and then the feasibility study with the, with the middle high school, um. Has the issue of providing the proper facility space?
That's gonna be done as part of the feasibility study, remember the initial feasibility study that, uh, D R A did? They actually recommended some movements and spaces, so now that that feasibility study's been approved by the voters. And the building committee is now entered into the contract and all that, that, yeah, that should be started. Yeah, that should be starting now and that's absolutely, absolutely a major focus of of that project will be.
That was the color coding of the spaces, the red, green and yellow.
That's correct, yeah.
And then Carol and I and others did sit down and look at what the new footprint of the building Pembroke is going to be and. Have the discussion with regard to what the program's going to be, the types of spaces those programs need. Uh made some adjustments in that area, so.
Is there any um discussion or is there any um uh interest in in the role of nature and nature and. Restoration and special ed and deficit, potential deficit disorder and how it gets incorporated?
Um that's certainly an aspect that we can take a look at because we know students who have. ADD or ADHD or even some of the executive dysfunction disorders that they do benefit from those movement sensory breaks. And incorporating nature into that would be another good avenue to take a look at.
If if um if you need any, there's there's a there's a. There's there's an awful lot of um empirical evidence out there now, um showing the different kind of uh. Systems that are being used through nature for that, that help. And and I have a lot of those studies if.
Oh, great. Yeah, that'd be wonderful. I appreciate that.
Carol, I'm wondering how um with all those programs that we're implementing for special ed, how are they evaluated? How how do we know how effective these programs are for the students that they're serving?
Well, what we're doing is we're looking at addressing that in a couple of ways. First of all, we've taken the different programs and we're looking at them across the district. So we're getting together, for example, our compass program, which meets the needs of our students on the autism spectrum disorder. And we're meeting once a month, analyzing the program, putting protocols, language, things in place that can go across the district. And we have a consultant who comes in for those monthly meetings to work with the team, to ensure that we're moving in the right direction. So we're doing that with the alternative program and we're beginning, um we're going, doing that also with the language-based learning program and the study skills program. So we have that in place. The second thing that we're looking at doing is I've been out searching for a third party, if you will. Who can come in and do for us an overall assessment of our programs. Right, you know, they would do surveys, look at programs. So there's, you know, an in-house component with the use of. You know, a couple hours a month of a consultant and then there's going to be the overarching approach.
And next year, we will have, they gave us a break this year because we have some new administrative support, but. We will have a follow-up to the coordinated program review. So we had some findings and some recommendations that were made the last time, which we which they're satisfied, we've put in place. But then they're gonna come back again and uh and take a look next year. So there'll be a number of of ways where. You know, we're having not only our folks be involved in it, but but ex- external um support and help as well. Other questions about special education?
No, and just so everyone at home doesn't think that we're just breezing through this, we one, we got the book while in advance and secondly, this is our. Second look at special ed um for this year. I mean, I know there have been adjustments and some little things, but this is the same thing that we've seen like months ago.
That's a great point.
For which for which we greatly appreciate you going through all of the. Thank you very much, I'm welcome.
If we move right along to tab number, tab N. Um, we're gonna talk about the districts revolving, yep, districts revolving accounts and grants. So go ahead, Joan, maybe is it again, just give them an overview.
I um I gave you a description. This was a description that we gave out to the FinCom last summer when we met with them and they. Wanted to know a little bit about revolving accounts, so that's, it's the same, it's the same description that I gave out then. Um so then I I did a similar breakdown, um moving it forward to next year. Based upon the current expenses that, you know, we've moved everybody up on the pay scales. We have a couple of retirements in the preschools, you can see there, so we budgeted appropriately. And so we've created just these mini budgets for each of the revolving accounts. And with our expectation or projection of what we'll have as carryforwards. And when we end FY thirteen, based upon what we know today, and then um a projected revenue based upon enrollments. If anybody has any questions. I didn't include athletics in here, that big breakdown.
I don't remember which one the goal, one of the goals was to get their counts down to fifty.
Yeah, they well, that we did that with all of them, Rob. The goal was to do that with pretty much. All of them if we could, but it was particularly with the after-school enrichment programs.
Right.
Can I, I'm sorry, can you say that again? What was the goal?
To to end up with fifty thousand or less in the account.
In the carryfor- to carry forward.
So in other words, you wanna spend the mon- if if you're bringing in the money, particularly in the after-school programs, one of the things we wanna do. Is invest more in the programs, right? So maybe have more field trips or um, you know. The the law does not require you spend it all hundred percent on that. You you can spend it on whatever we decide is necessary for the district. But as much as possible, we we want to.
Put it back in.
Put it back into the programs and put it back into the schools that are generating it. So for example, one of the things that they did in Pembroke, Dr. Tanner did, is they bought some laptops for the library. Because the after-school program uses the library for a good portion of their time. So during the after-school program, they have access to those computers and software, but they are also accessible to the rest of the school population during the day. So that would be an example of the kind of thing we might we might do so we get a greater value.
I like doing uh different um activities with the kids in the afternoon programs, you know, bringing people in or taking them on little adventures.
Love that. Um and then right behind that is the grants. Um, so your same kinda thing here, you're gonna see the little mini, I like that Joan, little mini budgets. Um and uh the the biggest grant we have is the ninety-four one forty-two, that special entitlement grant, which is the one I was just describing. With you. Um, and this is what we, this is what we charge to that grant.
Right, in the past until this year, it had been all tuition.
That's right.
And that's.
This is part of the Medicaid.
Right, you can't, you can't double dip, you can't get reimbursements for tuitions. Through Medicaid because it's a federally funded grant. So it's two federally funded programs, so by switching out the people that. That you you don't get anything for for Medicaid, we were able to recoup that money, so.
Totally brilliant. Um so what, in this particular section, what you see is the grants for FY fourteen that we expect to get. But if you flip right behind it, the one that's more of a spreadsheet, I think the important thing to notice there. No, it's still in the same section.
Oh, it's all.
It's all, yep, same section and so, but what it does is it lists all, it lists all of the grants that we've gotten and it looks. And it looks at the last, you know, nine, ten years. And one of the things that you can see is that some grants we got for a little bit of time and then they went away. And then others are pretty sustained every year, so allocation grants like ninety-four one forty-two, like Title One. Like Title Two. Those are grants that are tied to NCLB and they are based on a formula. Title One, we get a very small grant and the one thing about grants is they tend to go down and up, but often down. Um, you know, we don't get much in Title One because that's aid to disadvantaged children and our. Title One, our our actual poverty in the district is quite low, seven percent overall. So it's important for you to get the benefit of looking at, you know, you can see the big picture.
You can see the stimulus.
Yep, yeah, and you can see the stimulus.
Going through there.
Yep, you can.
And now we're only down to like four sixty next year for grants, where we had been well over, oh closer to six, almost seven.
Right.
Right, and everything, and everything we see, at least coming through my listserv and I'm sure Carol's listserv is, until they get this federal spending figured out. Education's gonna get caught and special education's gonna get caught, Title One is gonna get caught. I mean, they're going to.
And when they cut special ed.
Regular ed gets cut.
Special ed's not, I mean, that's.
The grants.
The grants, okay.
But that's the one thing I wanted to say when I keep hearing the people on the television saying special ed, but like, no, special ed's not gonna get cut because you're, those are mandated services. It's gonna be the, it's gonna be the other money that is being used for other things that that is gonna be the casualty, but.
What's interesting is also the FY thirteen grant number of four sixty-nine oh one eight is the lowest in our ten-year history. The next closest was FY oh seven at five fifty-four.
That's why I wanted you to have the historical picture.
Yeah, so it's important to know that we're not, we're relying less and we we don't have as much in grants. But yet we're still.
Because we're not poor and we're not underperforming. That's how you get money, if you're a high need district, if you're poor and underperforming. And we're neither of those things, so I mean, that's a good thing, but not if you're looking for grants.
My personal favorite, school choice.
School choice. Uh P. Um, so the first thing you have is looking at FY fourteen. Um, the carryforward is is anticipated to be eighty-six thousand dollars. We're expecting, based on the actual number of students that we know of next year, taking out the seniors. That we know are gonna graduate out, um the revenues are expect total revenues to two twenty-three. Um based on our expenses. Now, we did have to take a couple of things out of this. We reduced part of the kindergarten teacher salary. And moved it back into the budget. We had no choice. And I think we took out, uh the therapist, we moved to another, to another funding source as well. Um so you're, you have one more year of the server leases. That's just, there's one more year on that particular uh three-year lease. Athletics is still in here, as you know. These were the, remember we, last year we put two, almost three teachers and now we're moving a little bit off. And then we're gonna be left with expenses of two oh seven.
So we have nothing left in choice.
You won't and and you don't. You won't, if you look at uh the projected revenue at one thirty-seven, you couldn't sustain, I was thinking, well, you'll get rid of the server lease. But you couldn't sustain those salaries on there because your revenue was only one thirty-seven. So either if you either increase choice by taking more students in, or we have to move lots more off next year.
And when we say off this, it goes back to the budget, so that means that. We're reducing, we're reducing other, we're either reducing this or we're reducing this one forty-five in the regular.
And those are the choices, just like athletics, there are many choices like that and that's what happens. And so if you follow, just follow down. So that's FY fourteen, with we, that's real numbers. Then if you look just again for historical purposes. School choice, looking at it from two thousand nine to two thousand thirteen in terms of the revenue. Um, we have gone from two thousand nine to two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars to two thousand thirteen where we have one forty-eight.
Does that im- does that imply anything other than the obvious of the numbers going down?
It it just implies that we we're taking.
We're taking fewer students.
Fewer students.
We.
And as students graduate, we're not adding them back in.
Because we don't have the space.
Well, well, that's the conversation that, uh, you know, if Mr. Lucia were here, he would, he would want to chime in. Um, yes, in fact, we don't have more classrooms. We are at the max in terms of classrooms.
But there are more seat, there are seats available in classrooms now.
The average class size is not high, so.
High school class size, Peter's not here, so I'm gonna kinda speak out of turn maybe and he might yell at me. But I believe the class size in the high school is actually low, lower than where.
He would agree.
We put it at, so there are seats available. The question is, how many seats?
And that's where it's where the current school choice students, we would want them to go.
We we allocate.
That's our choice.
That's where we put them.
Typically, we look at where, typically, we look at the number of.
It's very complicated.
We look at, we look at the average class, the the average class size that we agreed on is whatever it is. In Pearlie, Pembroke and the middle high school. And then with, if there's an average class size in first grade, we agree on, I'm gonna say. Twenty-two, cause I can't remember the real number. And it's coming in at twenty. So we'd say we have two spots, we can open up two spots or, you know, X number of spots in first grade.
Generally, if it was that close, we wouldn't, but but we could.
But we'll say we're gonna open up spots in in these grades because we have seats available, based on the class size that we want.
Right.
The high school now, um for, I'm not sure why, the class size has gone down.
Well, part part of it is we targeted a lot of our our money in the override to make sure we had adequate core class sizes. Enough options for kids and we added those electives. So that was conscious. Remember, one of our things was to mitigate the accreditation risks. So.
And to restore the cuts.
We didn't plan on the number of kids this particular year that left for whatever reason. You know, we we figure about thirteen to fifteen kids that go to, that go to vocational schools or private schools. For whatever reason, this particular year, there was a higher than average number. And that accounted for having more slots available than we had expected to have.
So typically, I'm gonna say May, you go through, no, or sit earlier than that, it might be April. April, yeah, I'm thinking April will go through and say, here are the class si- here's the. Average class size that we would like to see and here are the spaces. Carol will recommend number of spaces.
Yeah, we'll go through and look at that. Um, you know, we, you know, for years, we we added quite a few kids, particularly at the high school level. Cause a lot of kids, we already, Laura and I were just going over today, we already have seven or eight students that have applied for ninth grade. And they they're like anxious to find out whether they're gonna get in or not and we explain to them the timeline, but that's unsolicited. We didn't. Open any slots and advertise any slots, but you know, already there's people who are interested. And then the following, um, we thought it would also be interesting to show you the trends in receiving and sending. So the pink is the sending and the receiving is the green. So again, going back historically, looking at two thousand four to two thousand thirteen, and I think that that tells the story. So in two thousand four, we had um, you know, over sixty students that we were receiving. And that, and only uh twenty-eight that were leaving and now we we have um like twenty-seven in and. Twenty-three out. So that's just, and so when we talk about why school choice has not been sustaining. And sustainable, that's why. Um, the other dilemma we always have is how do you keep school choice as much as possible? For those things that are one-time expenses, you know, so that you can do new computer leases, you can do. New curriculum adoption, you can do those kinda things, which you really don't wanna do is put sustainable things on it. And we haven't really had, um, we really haven't had the chance not to do that. Um, and then finally, in this section, um is just you, you're used to seeing this, Laura puts this together. And this just, again, we're going from the big to the small, this just breaks down in a little historical way. You know, by by grade and by school that kids uh get sent to, that choice out to, choice, you know, where they come from when they choice in. Parochial schools, private schools, vocational schools and the number of school choi- oh, sorry, homeschool. Students, just gives you a, an overall view of sort of how that breaks down specifically. So in April, generally, as Ann said, we would have a discussion about school choice, we would look at current enrollment. We would engage in the conversation of determining whether or not we're going to open any school choice slots this year. And if so, what slots, what what places would we, would we make slots available? We would advertise those slots based on what we get for interest. If we say ten slots to say pick ninth grade. We get fifteen slots, we must do a lottery, that's required. And if there's someone applying that has a sibling that's already here, we must accept the sibling. So there's rules around that too. There's rules around everything.
So once we decide on the number of choice students, then it it has to stay that way for the year. We can't. When then we hear that more students are leaving to go to a private school or or some other.
I need to read the law again, Ann, but I mean, Pam, but I think there are two times of the year when you can open slots up. I believe the first one is you have to let the state know if you're gonna open slots and I think it's by June.
Okay.
That you have to let them in and then I believe it's, the second is by December. You can open spaces again if you have them in December. We've never done that.
And the thing that we al- we always have to try to balance is, we can go through this all in April and say, we're gonna open up all these spots and. And award um choice students the opportunity to come here and then we have five families that move in.
That's right, that's right. That's why we never cut it close.
We we try not to cut it, cut it like that. And and this just speaks to something that Dave Bjork always used to say about choice. It's not, it's a funding trap.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, and you can look at history, but that doesn't necessarily determine the future.
Some dis- some districts don't accept school choice for a lot of reasons and other districts accept school choice and feel that it's a a great benefit to the overall. Community. Um, some people say, if you wanna take advantage, you live in Georgetown. Others, you know, so I mean, it, there's just a lot of, um, there's a lot of perspectives about this issue. But the goal is to try to not make it, like Ann said, a funding trap. Do, we need to do it for the right reasons. And make sure that it's not sacrificial, sacrificing any thing that we. And make sure that it's not sacrificial sacrificing any thing that we wanna do for our Georgetown students first and foremost. So that actually concludes the span of the budget.
Any questions, concerns? It's not, I mean, unfortunately, there's just not a lot to it.
It's just a change.
No, I mean, other than it's, and I hate to keep saying the same thing over and over again, but our revolving accounts. Are diminishing and our costs are continuing to go up and we're not, I mean, I think we're doing a lot with what we have. And I think that speaks volumes to what the administrators and the teachers are able to do, but we're still not moving. Things ahead, like I was speaking to Tracy Southwick the other day, she had a question about something. And I just realized, it, just at that moment, I thought, you know what, we're sitting here talking about athletics and and all that we're gonna do with that and. What are we doing for all of the other co-curricular, you know, activities that we'd like to offer our students?
Arts and music.
Right, all that, so it it's just, it's one of those things, we're, there's still so much we can do, but we're grateful that we can do what we can as well.
And I, you know, I have to say, the override, I know, is really, you know, stressful for people with their taxes, but. It allowed not only the schools, but the whole town to catch their breath. You know, we are not talking about six hundred, eight hundred thousand dollar cuts, we're not talking about asking the town for. Seven, eight hundred thousand dollar increases, right? We are, that override did for us what we needed it to do, and it did, it did help the town, nobody in town is looking at massive cuts. The way we were looking at them three years ago.
Right.
So now the goal is to look at, like, we were talking today about, just looking, Don and I were talking about special education and. You know, really looking at, you know, over the next three to five years, how how many, where do the students fall? How many students are gonna age out, how might, you know, that that look, um, looking at the teaching ranks. You know, how many teachers may retire in the next three to five years, and how does that work into long term?
And how our student needs being met by the programs that we have and how can we continue to develop them and develop our teachers in the way that our students.
That's right.
Tailoring to their needs.
So that's the process of not just looking, you know, at a mi- at a micro level, but really continuing to always look his- historically and. The macro level, trying to always think ahead and not be reactive, not be responsive. With our strategic goals.
I just wanna thank Joan for what she's brought to the district, it's already been evident.
I would second that, absolutely.
Carol, you know what, the question that's just occurs to me is. If we were in better financial shape, is there something that you wish we were doing in in our schools in Georgetown that we're not doing? Something that feels really, really important, that's not accounted for in this budget and. None of us has the insight or knowledge to raise, and maybe something that you're just praying nobody ever asks for.
No, I mean, I think, I think I'm excited about the possibility of what the technology can do in the new Penbrook. And potentially what we could do for technology even through the mid- middle high school feasibility study. Um, uh, because I think that there's a lot we can do to reach the range of all learners, um, with.
With technology.
Better and more up to date technology and the accessibility of that, so that's always been a struggle is how do we, how do we, we've actually found creative ways to get. And thanks to the donation of many parents, that's really helped a ton, but you know, I think there's just so much. We can do, it never replaces the interaction with teachers, we never want that, but there are, there are a great number of things that the kids have today. To do with technology that I think our kids are behind a little bit in their ability to do. I think I I'm, we, we're always talking about, you know, just looking at the kind of. Uh, outlets for creativity that our students, you know, can have, because I I think when people say to me, you know, it's all about MCAS and testing and. You know, uh, you can teach students to prepare for MCAS and not do it in a way that's not creative and innovative and. And engaging, you know, I mean, that's not the intention of MCAS was to to cut out all that in teaching and learning, so. I would, I I want us to continue to think about the various ways and making sure we have materials and programs. To really tap into, you know, creativity and looking at those high achieving learners, that's in our strategic plan. You know, really, are there those learners that we we really know, we're we're maybe not servicing to the extent? So there's always those things that we always wanna continue to move forward with, um. So those would be a couple of my ideas, the principals might have some other ideas and certainly. Um, com- going forward, we can certainly have a discussion with you about that in terms of looking forward at the strategic. Direction we wanna take in the district, continue to look at.
I just think it's, in some ways, it's hard to know, um, what the community wishes.
Yeah, values.
That, you know, what what do they wish the schools offered, and and I think that's a hard thing for any parent to know until. You have a child who you think might do better, if only, but. How do we find out what those if only's are?
Yeah.
What's the mechanism for for?
Mm-hmm, well, one of the things we do, we did put in the strategic plan is that we wanna take a look at engaging the community and in a conversation about that. And we've talked about, you know, I've, I know there's a couple of companies that I've had the chance to work with and I know. Uh, in the past, and I know there's like Beverly and, um, and Danvers and a number of communities have invested in, is putting, actually put money into. Um, hiring for a firm to come in and actually engage focus groups with the community, cause we can, we can do focus groups, but sometimes people aren't gonna talk honestly to us. It's easier for sometimes an external person to have to come in and, so we've talked about identifying indicators of excellence and. Looking at, you know, getting feedback and information from the community, that's not something we've budgeted for, but that's something that's in our plan that. Again, that would be what I'd use school choi- I'd use a school choice for something like that, because it's a one time. You're gonna spend seven thousand dollars, whatever, to get this done, but that's a one time expense, it replaces itself. That's the kind of thing that, um, you know, I think we do need to do and and that's, we have that as a strategic directive. Okay.
All right, moving right along, we're gonna go back to cover.
Okay.
Um, what we didn't cover.
Okay.
Um, so Zach, you're filling in for Cole.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is he cheering on the girls varsity and that's why you're here or?
He told us, I didn't know what he said.
I can't, I can't remember, he did tell.
Um, uh, Allstate.
That's right.
Singing concert.
I forgot that, okay.
Yeah, he's, um, performing on Saturday, I think, and preparing for the next two days.
Oh, great, well, welcome.
Really exciting.
That's fantastic, is he the only one?
No, there's, um, Emery Champo is also with him.
Okay.
Um, so she and Cole, with Mrs. Flum, went to Boston, and they get to form at, perform at Symphony Hall.
Wow, that's great. That's fantastic.
They're both very talented, yeah, so glad for them.
Good.
Other than that, I think, uh, everyone knows about the basketball game tonight.
Knock one, have you heard anything?
He probably tweets.
And, uh, the girls' ice hockey team also has a game on Saturday, um, against Austin Prep, that's at, uh, the Governors Academy. So, uh, I know they're looking for a lot of support, and, um, I think this week. It's just basically everyone's jumping back into it after a nice long week off. And, uh, it's crunch time right now, I think, for a lot of people, um, I know, in a lot of my classes, it's. We're preparing for like the end of the year, some tests that we have to take, a lot of AP classes, we're really pushing down. And, um, I don't know, everything, I think everything's going well.
And we're in between sports seasons, we're kinda wrapping up.
Yeah, I've been seeing a lot of people getting ready for the next season.
Yeah.
Getting in shape.
It's also nice, the prospect of being outside again for sports.
Oh, so nice, so nice.
Mm-hmm, looking forward to the nice weather.
Yeah, it'd be nice.
Okay, Zach, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, all right, um, is there anyone here from the public that wishes to comment on an agenda item? Okay, um, Brian, do you wanna? I'm sorry to jump around like that on you.
That's okay, and Peter's gonna do his.
I think, um, March fourteenth.
Okay, we moved things around because of the girls' game, so he could get there and then, um, so Chris could go as well.
Fire up the technology here.
So Brian's gonna, while he's doing it, Brian's gonna be coming back, uh, before the committee soon. To talk about, um, an after school program that he would like to create, he and his staff would like to create. At the middle school, starting like with like a little flyer, you know, kind of a, um, a spring kickoff kind of thing to see. How much interest it will generate, and then if it generates the interest to look at doing it, uh, for the year next year. So that'll be coming, they're they're working on the final ta- things of the proposal, but then that'll be coming before you to get your endorsement.
Okay, and just so that you got, just from a historic perspective, we started out first with a Penbrook after school.
First with the Pearlie.
Oh, sorry, Pearlie after school program.
Middle and, uh, I'm sorry, for two schools.
For for everyone at, and but we held it all at Penbrook, Pearlie.
Pearlie.
I'm sorry.
We get that right.
Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry, so we started out with the Pearlie program and it was for Pearlie and Penbrook held at Pearlie, right? And it was arousing success, and so then what we did was we decided to, or Carol and the administrative team came up with the. Program at Penbrook, so what we were concerned about was when you separated the programs, were we gonna start losing, you know? Was it gonna make financial sense to have both programs, they turned out to both be very successful, but we did use. We funded, we helped out funding, um, for that program, so we'd do the same, I assume, at the middle school.
Yes, we'd have to give them a little bit to start up.
Right, a little start.
The the two programs at this elementary schools do two things, well, actually, they do two things, three things. The first is they have a program till six for people who need daycare. But then there are other programs called enrichment that don't happen every day that people can choose to do, and then there's a convenience hour for families. You know, for parents who may need to work a little bit longer and, you know, comes to pick up their child, so that they can stay in the program for. Short period of time and and that works well, so we're running that at both, for the inter- the the plan at your, at Brian's school would be. An enrichment program, not 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 really a a a daycare program.
Right, and this is, this is a result of somewhat of an informal survey that I did last year through email. Asking parents, um, and students what they would like to see in an after school enrichment program. And what courses would like to be offered, so we kind of did a tally and took what what. Were the most well liked and and asked about programs and we're gonna implement them slowly.
So I just wanted to, while we were waiting for him to get the technology, till, you know, he'll be coming back and that'll be.
We won't grow you right now, won't it?
No.
Well, that was a good block. That was well played, well, thank you very much, um, for allowing me the opportunity tonight to. Present our kind of mid-year updates and and essentially that's what I believe my role is here tonight is to. Allow you the opportunity to see what type of programs, uh, we have been. Instituteering and showcase them and maybe give you a little bit of information on them, both you and the general public, so people will have an awareness of. How hard everyone is working at the middle school. And, um, I will say, now that I'm into my second year as the principal of the middle school, I continue. Particularly this year to be, um, even even further impressed with all of the staff members and their willingness to. Um, just continue the work, and we're starting to see some things get off the ground now and and really take hold and and it's impressive. Um, the time and the energy that people continue to put in, um, and and there's some excitement around some of these programs, so. Some of it is a little dry when you're reading it and I I'm not one to read the entire. So I'll just highlight it and hit the bullets and be happy to answer any questions either during or or after, so. What I'd like to do is just show you where we're at, um, as we chase our four goals. For the year and and the first one revolves around curriculum to try to balance. And have a comprehensive curriculum for grade six through eight, as you know, the mass curriculum framework's going to be changing and incorporating the common core. So here is what we have been working on, and there's a lot here. First one, I'm actually extremely excited about, it's an English Language Arts Vertical Teaming Committee. Uh, which has been formed with the help of Julie DeRoche and some teachers in grade six through eight. These teachers volunteered, uh, all of them have a great working knowledge of of the Massey LA. Frameworks as well as the Common Core, they are doing things such as researching best practices. For teaching content and looking at different assessments. They're going to be reporting out at our school-based meetings and filling in staff on on their progress. And the best part is they enjoy doing that, they enjoy working and sharing that information with a group of learners. They're working very hard this year to align the standards across the grade levels in the schools, so this will eventually be an entire district initiative. And they're also looking at, uh, creating district assessments, which should really help to support the school-based and grade level curriculum plans. As we move down to word generation, this is something I wanted to highlight, as it says, it's a multidisciplinary. Academic vocabulary program, the short and long of that is, we've implemented in grade six word generation. Which highlights what the developers have considered to be the most important vocabulary words that students need to know. In various grades, the best part about this is. Students in sixth grade get five words a week, and they're incorporated into all the common core classrooms. So they use the same academic vocabulary in English, math, science and social studies. So by the time that they are done with these five words, they are embedded in their mind, and they can use them in in. Different dynamics in different curricula, so it it's, it's been tremendously successful, we're going to be incorporating it in. To seventh grade, uh, next year, there's still a discussion about whether or not it's necessarily appropriate at the eighth grade level, so we're. We're working with the eighth grade team as as we discuss that. The open response training on November sixth, um, was with Bill Amorosi. Who was one of the pioneers in the development of MCAS, especially the writing components. So he was in on the ground floor and helped develop the lot, to develop a lot of the open response, uh, formats. So he was an invaluable resource and and I participated in the training as well, and it was, it was incredible, it brought a ton of information and we're using it on a daily basis. As we're increasing our writing across the curriculum. The new reading assessment tool, um, that's, that's a little misleading, we do have a reading assessment tool that we're using in grade six right now. And that has been successful to see where students are, but I'll talk a little bit in a minute about. A re- about some assessments that we're purchasing for next year to assess reading. Um, the all staff were trained in open response as a repeat area, I apologize for that. The professional development on January twenty eighth was dedicated to writing across curri- curriculum. And that is just what it sounds like, what it does is it teaches, it teaches teachers across all the four discipline areas. Particularly English side and social studies and math. Standardized writing concepts, so that they, when we do it. Complete our writing across curriculum, they will all be able to not only assess properly and correct properly, but they'll be able to. Develop writing programs within their particular areas of content. And the math department that's cut off on the bottom has monthly in-service trainings, working with Paula Utter. And the members of of the grade levels to begin transition to the Common Core. Goal number two, data assessment, we are using that to inform instruction, I will, um. Kind of close this down a little bit and and give you the short version, we use. Specifically, what we've been using is MCAS data, as we start to build in new assessments into the middle school, we'll be using. Hopefully quarterly assessments and some of our new reading assessments to to get, to help us to guide instruction. But for now, the MCAS data at the beginning of the year, we're lucky enough to get it earlier now, it's broken down by. Individual students, by grade levels, by cohorts, year to year, and by subgroups. We get item analysis breakdowns, so we can target particular questions or strands. And, um, the staff is extremely aware of all the areas of need within the different disciplines. We discuss it at staff meetings, they have all the breakdowns, um, in email form. And in PDF form, so they can break down individual students, they can, we can even break down a particular classroom groups. From years prior and for current years. If anyone is looking for any particular data, I have it, I will not bore bore you with it now, I have some in my head and some in front of me in regards to MCAS. So part two of that is closing the achievement gap between regular and special ed subgroups. We're very lucky in Georgetown, we have one sub. We're very lucky in Georgetown. We have one subgroup, that's special education. My former district, we had five different subgroups. And it was difficult sometimes to, to narrow it down. We do have a, a laser-like focus this year with our special education staff. They're receiving training in all different areas. Some of the highlighted ones, I know people in the compass room, which is our ASD, our Autism Spectrum Classroom, have been trained in a um systematic educational supports for students with ASD, social group components, positive behavior supports. Um, and, and those have been fantastic. We also are looking at, we, we've organized a team and a committee to look at the enhancement and enrichment programs that we currently have and how we can better utilize those. Um, keeping what works and looking at what doesn't work and, and trying to improve consistently on those. Part of that is looking at different scheduling options. We're now looking at two options, which are a flexible schedule and a rotating schedule. In, in the rotating schedule, it's very interesting because we determined just yesterday that we can actually gain if it works, and we have to work with the high school, we can actually gain almost seventeen hours a year in actual, extra instructional minutes. Just by moving, by cutting down movement times and by dropping a period a day and moving it. So it's been a very interesting um research project. So there's a lot of work to be done because we work in concert with the high school, we share staff, we share programs. So we're trying to navigate that. Okay, these two following ones are fairly self-explanatory. This, this goal three involves around uh bullying prevention and intervention plans for the middle school. The first area, the School Climate and Student Survey is, is a survey that was completed last month for our eighth grade students. And it gave us a, a great deal of information about their feelings on their school and personal safety, bullying and teasing, their peer relationships within the building and outside. So we have, it says data collector will be analyzed. It's already been collected. And we are in the process of analyzing it. We're working very closely with the guidance department, Justin Lepome in particular, who's um one of our guidance interns, who was instrumental in developing this survey. So he deserves a lot of credit for that. Uh, the health staff, the phys ed teachers and health teachers have integrated the anti-bullying, anti-bullying program into their daily curriculum. So when they have health class, they go through scenarios and they use a scripted text to do that. And the third thing is we're planning to host an anti-bullying Good Choices themed day for sometime later in the spring, probably after MCAS. Which ties us up for about two months. And goal number four, to enhance communication between the school and student families and helping to deliver the mission of the middle school. Daily announcements have been a, a big success. We continue to involve the students in performing the pledge and putting personal announcements, celebrating personal accomplishments. We do birthdays on a daily basis, which they love. And we do them with, we coordinate them with famous birthdays, so they, they get famous for a little while. And quarterly newsletters and also, it's not up there, but the um, we continue to increase our email, oh, it is there, uh increase our email database to let parents know um not necessarily on a quarterly basis, but if and when, it has to be on a daily basis if there's issues going on or excuse me, announcements that we need to let them know about. And that's pretty effective. Start of the Month program has been very successful. We're recognizing two students in each grade level on a monthly basis, a boy and a girl. And it's not necessarily for academic excellence, although that can be a part of it. It's um for catching someone doing something nice, it's for being a good school citizen, for doing something in their community. And they're nominated by the teachers at their grade level or any staff member chooses to throw in nomination. This last one is a good news phone call to parents. We got together as a staff and decided it would be a great idea on Friday afternoons, when it's been a long week, take five minutes before you leave and make a phone call to at least one or two homes and just have something positive to say about the student that you work with. And um I can tell you that from my perspective, I do it as well. The, the um the feeling I get, I'm sure, is much better than the feeling that they get because it, it lasts with me for a long time. It's just, it's a nice thing to do and it's, it's as healthy for us and, and makes you realize why you're really there. Um, and I'm sure, as a parent myself, I'm sure parents appreciate getting a phone call from a teacher or a principal and, and not answering the phone and saying, what's wrong?
How many sides of belief do you get after?
Exactly. Well, you do. Well, when I first call, I'll say, this is Mr. Gill from the middle school and everything's fine. And they'll say, oh, you can hear them say, phew, on the other end of the sun. Um, and that's just a, you know, it's, it's not a completely comprehensive look at what we're doing, but I just wanted to give you somewhat of an update of all the good things that are going on and that we are on track and um we will continue to do so. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have to say, the one thing I like is that you're our longest-standing middle school principal in five years, I think. I'm not sure how many years. So it's nice to have this and not have, well, I'm just picking up from last year when.
I have to add.
So thank you.
I really enjoyed my experience, but it wasn't really a high bar to reach whenever, it was only a year.
Well, hey, you know, for those of us sitting here that have been like every year going, okay, what are we doing?
Oh, it's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Well, thank you. All right, questions, concerns, comments?
Okay, now that, now that I'm done and this hasn't crashed, I'd like to say a special thank you to Donna Stray, who happened to be in the building today when my laptop crashed at five thirty and it would not recharge. And she let me borrow hers. So thank you, Donna.
Thank you, Donna.
That's teamwork.
That's right.
Um, all right.
Sorry, Rob.
Uh, moving right along, um any questions on the superintendent's information for the committee? The one thing that I did, I'll, I'll give this back to, did you include the Baker Adams stuff in the packet?
Um, yes.
What I'm gonna do, uh Laura, I'll just give this back to you. This, I've never seen this form before, so I'll give it back to you, but we'll, the, um, the trust will tell us um the money, the total money that we have to allocate. And then from that point, we'll decide how many awards and the monetary value of each award. And the committee with Carol will determine um disselection. Um, which is how we've done it in the past and that's how the, it's set up to work. So I'll send this back over to you.
Sure.
Um, all right. We're gonna do the high school review next time. All right, so I guess we're up to, no financial report. We did that last time. And we did the budget. Uh, subcommittee reports, budget and finance. Do you have anything other than the budget?
I know, everything.
It was a huge piece of work.
Um, let's see, governance?
We haven't met.
Well, we haven't met for the past.
Too busy with the budget.
Negotiating? That's, I, believe me, I understand, having done it for five years.
You've got a few, you've got a few things that, you know, you're trying to get approved, so.
Oh, negotiating?
We're still moving along with Chisa?
Yeah, we're, but we're close. We're, we're, we're close. We're looking forward to like maybe March?
We meet again in this third week of March.
Actually, in March also you'll, we'll, we'll be talking with you about the final language that we're um gonna be trying to, um, for the future evaluation.
Okay. Um, public, public relations?
Again, we haven't met.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Um, safety, nothing?
We haven't met for the past two weeks.
Monthly meeting.
Right, it's a monthly meeting.
School building?
Uh, I think the only thing that's new from the last time is that um February nineteenth uh was when the building committee met and voted seven to one to approve the submittal of the design development hundred percent complete drawings to the MSBA. Um, so that has moved on. And the other dates are all the same, but they're worth reiterating, I think. The next meeting um for the building committee is March twelfth. The hundred percent complete construction documents are due August fifth. These are just highlight times. The start of construction is anticipated for November two thousand thirteen. And occupying the building is anticipated for September two thousand fifteen. And then the middle-high school feasibility study is underway. And come December of this year, uh they will have developed project scope and budget. And then the punchline to that is it goes to uh the MSBA for approval, January two thousand fourteen. And then in May of two thousand fourteen, it comes to the town, to the town to vote on that. That would be it.
Wow. Certainly keeping us busy.
Yes.
Um, okay, next up is old business. It's the School Committee Superintendent Operating Protocols. Pam, I think you came up with this. Wasn't this part of your, like, I remember you kind of surfacing this a while ago.
Yes, yes. I, I believe I had found something like this on another district website and it was so long ago. I'm, sorry, I don't remember which school website it was.
I think it was Andover.
Oh.
I thought it was Linfield.
Yeah, okay.
I think we should probably find out every day.
I think it was Linfield. That's right, yes. And it's just meant to kind of clarify for, for the public and for school committee members, particularly new school committee members, you know, the role and responsibility of, of the school committee.
Yep.
Um, and because it's, you know, it's a real clear, simple, one-page item on what, what our role and responsibilities are.
Right, not meant to be our policies, which like are this big and just why we're here and what we're supposed to do for the district.
Just a description, yes, of what we do.
How you're gonna operate.
Comments, questions, concerns?
I think the only two comments that I had um was on the bullet, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ninth bullet. Just to clarify, perhaps in writing, um, the, what the word support means, cause it uh what, what I mean by that is that so people can't, uh, I'll, I'll read it out loud. It's not very long. Base our decisions on available facts, vote our convictions, avoid bias, and uphold and support the decisions of the majority of the school committee once a decision is made. And I guess the, what would help clarify what support means is, is that it's not telling somebody who may vote no on a particular um item, that if that item were to come up again, they somehow have to change their vote. And that's what support means. That's, that's not what this is talking about. And so uh, that was something that I thought um would help me to be clarified in fine-tuning the writing of that. And the last one was the third bullet from the bottom, which is striving to have no surprises for the committee or superintendent. All members will receive the same information on all topics in a timely manner. And on that one, uh adding that if something does come up that turns out to be a surprise, what would be the protocol for how to handle it at that point in time? And the solution may be to table the discussion, to talk about it later. But uh that was, um, those are the two that I just thought I needed some clarity on.
So what would you?
It, it doesn't say to have no surprises. It, it says to strive to have.
And I think it's more, and it's.
I mean, if spontaneity, we want to allow for spontaneous discussion.
And it's a guiding principle. It's not the, it's not our policy manual, like where we go into, like, we have some great policies that we're coming up, that are coming up that I'm thrilled with. Um, it's just meant how we're gonna.
It's going to prepare and become informed about the topics that we're bound to discuss at a particular meeting ahead of time as much as possible.
Right.
And what it says, I have no, I mean, I, I'm, I'm right on with it. What it says, I have no arguments with. It's not about what it says. I think it's about that it's just missing one more piece to clarify what then you do if something does uh happen. But that's just me.
So what would you want it to say?
Um, well, I haven't uh figured out the exact wording. Um, you know, this was something that was in, you know, packets and was looking at it and came up and I haven't.
Rob, I was just, just in thinking this through, what you've said, it seems to me that um, what perhaps is missing is um it's one more bullet point that um says something about recognizing that while we agree to these principles, we also recognize that the committee consists of individuals who will not always agree. And we, and yet we agree to um, respect our differences, even, even when they're not upheld. Something along those lines. It seems to me like.
And there's a bullet actually right below, the first one that Rob pointed out, work to build trust between among school committee members and the superintendent by treating everyone with dignity and respect, even in times of disagreement.
Yeah, that's true, yes.
And I think support, I think support the decision doesn't mean that you agree, but you uphold the decision of the committee.
You accept the majority.
Right, exactly. Like, I'll, use my own.
Even if you don't agree.
My own personal example. I voted against starting school before Labor Day. Um, one, the first year it was presented, and it was a three to two vote. Um, and then the next year, it came up again, and I voted the same way. It didn't mean that I didn't support the position of the committee. It meant that I believed that in starting after Labor Day. But it didn't say that I didn't support by voting no again the next year.
Right.
If that, I don't know if that clarifies.
I, I just think it's important to communicate with the public about what our roles are.
Right.
Responsibilities, particularly for, to anyone who might consider, want to be a member of the school committee at some point.
It so happens there's a spot of it.
It so happens, that's right.
And that papers are due back by March twelfth.
By March twelfth. One could pull papers if one was interested.
Um, so would you, do you want to make changes to this? Um, do you want to go back to governance or?
Has it ever been to governance?
Well, that's, it's been.
This is where it came from.
To the governance meetings before.
This is where it came from.
Chance to look at this before.
It's on old business.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, that's why.
And, and, you know, like all policy, it doesn't need to be written in stone either. It's something that you could review at a future date.
Honestly, I would suggest reviewing it. I would.
Regular basis.
I would do, I would review it and change it at your, um, the first meeting after a re, after your reorg in May. Because then it gives all, it gives all the members, new people, a chance to see it and understand it. Uh, that's just my recommendation for the next five meetings.
Okay, but do you want it to go back to governance to discuss, or wait until then to see if there are, the new committee member has questions as well?
I, I think we should go with this for now and get it moving because otherwise we're gonna be at the next three meetings.
Right, it's been sitting there quite a while.
What happens to this once we, if we approve it?
It gets posted on the website.
Yeah, it's not a policy. It's just our statement of beliefs, how we want to operate as a committee.
Gets posted on the website.
Yeah. Any further discussion? All right, um, so Cheryl will entertain a motion to approve the School Committee Superintendent Operating Protocols as presented.
So moved.
I second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? motion carries. Um, next up is a GEA contract. Um, as Carol explained, we worked on this contract through last year. Um, and the reason why it's coming to you now was because we were waiting, or we were not waiting, we were, we were waiting to get the contracts all put together from a document standpoint, thinking that we were gonna approve the regular contract and then the teacher evaluation as an add-on or a side letter or something like that. Apparently other people thought that we're just gonna do the entire document at once. But we really need to get this. This has been done since last summer. So we need to get this done. We need to get
Been sitting.
Everything processed the way that it should be in accordance with the contract. Is that?
Yes, yeah, one of the reasons is we have teachers that are retiring and this has to get to MTRS so that they
so that they can start their pensions on time.
Right.
So then once the teacher eval is all done, then we'll just then go ahead and approve that.
Right, and MTRS doesn't care about that. They only care about the salary schedules.
They care about the dollars, right. And this is the same thing that we, um, I, I didn't notice the signature page and so that's what.
Neither. That's a little concerning. Because we need your signatures.
Can we vote and sign later or do we?
I think that's what we're gonna have to do because the signature page isn't here. So if you vote and then maybe what we can do is, when you come to pick up your packet or something.
Signature page, I got it. Oh, before, all the appendix is page twenty-six.
Yeah, that's what I got too. Okay.
That's the page. Then everything else is appendix.
Right, because that's the end of it.
Okay.
And it's, and it's in the sun.
Okay, um, so are there any questions about this? It's the sa- it's what we agreed to. It's what we talked about last, was it September?
Well, that's when it was, September first, two thousand twelve, but we, it was before that.
Yeah, it was, yeah. Yep. Questions, comments, concerns?
Some people strike through for one contract length. That's what some districts do. They strike through for one contract length and then it comes out. If you, on the signature page is a strike through. The only page is a strike through.
Yeah, the top.
So it's, you know.
Bottom of twenty-five and top of twenty-six.
I've seen contracts where they strike through, the first year there's a change. In three years, when the contract is done again, the strike throughs disappear and then it's just the new language.
There's strike through, there's strike throughs throughout it.
Yeah, I think that's what it is.
Yeah.
They put the change. They want to show the old language.
Yeah, they like to, yeah, they like to hold that old language.
And in three years, when you do it again, the strike throughs go away.
Yeah, yeah. So again, I mean, the reason why we're going through this is because we had discussions every step of the way and we voted to approve it. This is just the language part of it. Um, so chair will entertain a motion to approve the GEA contract, for the time period September first, two thousand twelve to August thirty-first, two thousand fifteen as presented.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Good, that's great.
Motion carries. All right, so do you want me to sign?
Yeah, just sign. If you don't mind, Dan.
No. I'll send that. Um, okay, next up is new business is the first reading of new policy file JS International Exchange Students. We got this last time and it was, um, initial distribution, I think is what they call it.
That's right.
So we don't do anything this time. We have a second reading at our next meeting, isn't it? Yeah. An approval. Okay, lastly, declaration of surplus materials from Pearlie. Appears that we have extra overhead projectors. So chair will entertain a motion to approve the declaration of surplus materials at Pearlie as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, um, we are gonna have an executive session. It'll be brief. Um, just one quick thing, um, we briefly mentioned this earlier. The town election is going to be held on Tuesday, April thirtieth, which is gonna be combined with a special, um, state primary. So it's gonna say the town. I think I read ten thousand dollars, which is nice. Um, but that means the last day to pull papers, um, and return papers is Tuesday, March twelfth. Um, and there is one seat available on the school committee, so I encourage you to call, um, anyone to find out about it and, um, take an interest because it is actually pretty fun. Um, and the last day to register to vote will be April tenth. March twelfth is the next school building committee meeting. Are there any other meetings that people need to know about? Oh, next Thursday, a week from tonight, we have our public hearing for the budget at quarter seven, third floor, same location. So please come with your questions, comments, um, anything you want to say. This is a time for the public to say whatever they want about the budget. It's open to the public and it's for the public.
And maybe one of the things we could do is, I was just asking, um, if we can post this budget, this draft budget on the website, like tomorrow, then people could go to the website if they wanted to review the documentation and the backup in advance of the public hearing so that they could come to the meeting prepared. We, we, we will post it on the website.
Okay, so look on the website and, um, review it and ask questions. Next, like I said, next Thursday is the public hearing and then we have a regular meeting right after that. Um, and I think that's it. All right, so we are gonna have an executive session for the purpose of.
Negotiations with non-union.
Oh, negotiations with non-union personnel. And it's, uh, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, paragraph two. So this is roll call. We won't be returning to regular session.
Aye.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
All right, and you are free to leave.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.